Welcome, everyone, from that questionable weather day. Appreciate it. First order of business, we have a presentation from Paul Gordon, Bucks County Planning Commission. So, Paul, when you're ready, we'll dim some lights and go from there.
Okay, I'm gonna slide over here since I've got some details for it and I need to get this seen better with screen.
And you're gonna use that microphone?
Yes.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. You're still hearing me? I want people to be able to see, so...
You can move that stand if you want to come in.
Okay, let me move back here some, that way we won't be in people's way. Is that good for everyone? Okay. I want to thank you for your time tonight. What we wanted to do is the county has been working on a trail feasibility study for the upper Nishamity Creek. And basically, the project background is that way back in 1955, the county parks board recommended the creation of a linear park system along the Nishamity, including the Nishamity Creek and Mill and Black Ditch Creeks down in the southern portion of the county. Then, jump forward to 1974, 1986, and the county reaffirmed its commitment to this linear park concept when the Bucks County Park and Rec Plan. In 1989, after the county abandoned the plans for the Dark Hollow Dam, they dedicated the Dark Hollow County Park, which was comprised of many of the parcels they had acquired along the Nishamity. In 2003 and 2004, these watershed river conservation plans for the upper, middle, and lower Nishamity also recommended the establishment of a trail system along the creek. In 2004, the Nishamity Creek was identified as an open space priority land in the Regional Green Space Priorities Project by the Green Space Alliance. In 2005, the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, which is the regional planning commission for the Delaware Valley area, identified the Nishamity Creek Greenway and the Mill and Queen Anne Creek Greenways as part of the 2030 Green Space Network. In 2011, the county adopted the County Open Space Greenway Plan, which identified 27 different greenway corridors throughout the county, the Nishamity being one of those. And similarly, around 2012, the county adopted the Bicycle County, excuse me, Bucks County Bicycle Master Plan, which again included the Nishamity Creek and other roads in the area as key components of the bicycle facilities network. Kind of why is all this support? Well, back in 2011, when the county did the Open Space Greenways Plan, we asked people what they wanted to see more of in the county in terms of park and recreation facilities. And the two things that really popped out were that people wanted more bike lanes and bike paths, 64% of respondents indicated that, and trails, at 65%, were the highest-rated item people were interested in. So again, it's clear that people are, you know, they like the trails, obviously, that they have, as evidenced by the success of the local bike and hike initiative, but the county needed to kind of get on board a little bit more. So with that, coming out of the Open Space Greenways Plan, the county subsequently applied for funding under various funding sources to conduct trail feasibility studies for different creek segments. As I mentioned, the upper Nishamity is what I'm here to speak about today. That was funded by the Delaware Valley Regional Plan, excuse me, Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission Regional Trails Program, which was funding provided to them through the William Penn Foundation. We have the Mill, Queen Anne, Black Ditch, which is funded by DEP's Coastal Zone Management Program. The Mill and Nishamity that I actually had my initial steering committee kickoff meeting for today, and that was funded by DCNR, and then the Department of Community Economic Development through the Marcellus Shell Act 13 Funding, we just received a grant for the lower Nishamity. So this will complete all the trail feasibility work for the Nishamity. And so the county's brought in about $154,000 worth of grant funding, and the match is all in staff time, not actual funds being outlaid. In terms of where these various projects lie, this is the Mill, Queen Anne, Black Ditch down in Levittown area. This is the lower Nishamity, the middle Nishamity, and the upper Nishamity. Although we know that the Nishamity continues on down, we did not need to apply for grant funding for that segment, as Benson Township separately had received grant funding earlier and had completed all the trail feasibility work for that portion of the Nishamity. This feasibility study for the upper Nishamity encompasses seven different municipalities. It's Dulles Town, Warwick, Buckingham, New Britain Township, and then the Shawfond and New Britain Boroughs. It's, county-owned land is about 9.5 miles of it. There are eight municipal parks along the creek, and obviously, very heavily sloped areas and overhanging rock cliffs in various points of interest, including Central Park, Dalva College, and the Eight Arch Bridge, Rushland, among others. With that being said, we've broken it down into six segments to make it navigable, so to speak. It begins over here at Twin Streams Park in Shawfond and New Britain area, and extends down to where the little Nishamity comes into the main stem of the Nishamity, also called the Forks and Nishamity. And what we wanted to do today was just give you an overview of the proposed trail routing. For those of you who might be familiar with the trail feasibility study, what they're designed to do is to really assess the potential or the feasibility of going out and seeing, could you put a trail in? And if so, what are the roadblocks, what are the obstacles, what are the environmental constraints you need to come up against? Identify, you know, easements that would need to be acquired, a lot of different elements. So with that, and through working with the Dulles Town Bike Committee, we met with them a couple of times during our field research. Tom Kelso is on our steering committee for this project, as is Marilyn Jacobson, who may even be also be familiar with. They've, you know, helped guide the process, and we've worked locally with Gilmore Associates as our consulting engineer on the project. So as I mentioned, the trail would start here with Twin Streams Park. As I go through the presentation, red lines represent existing trails, green lines represent the primary proposed trail network, and these turquoise lines represent segments that would actually be on-road. So again, coming out of Twin Streams Park into Blue Jay Park, it would run behind Blue Jay Road, then cross the Yenami Middle School property. There's a little existing trail here behind Lendelby Lane. It would come out, go on-road along Forest Road, cross Bristol Road, and basically be on-road on, I forget the name of the street, I apologize, but then it would cross two or three private properties to connect into the Yenami Nature, or, excuse me, Quinlan Nature Preserve. And this is in line with the tri-municipal trails plan that the New Britons and Shawfond have been working on over time. The trail then, the desired routing is to continue straight down the Nishamity and join in with the trail that will be under construction shortly on the Shawfond, New Britain Joint Municipal Authority property. There is a proposal to connect to the New Britain train station by making use of the road, the existing service roads around the Vila Cemetery, and work is actually beginning in terms of easement acquisition with the property owners along Tammany Avenue to get to the train station. Another thing we had assessed was the potential of coming down the right-of-way Bristol Road and then making use of the sidewalk on the northern edge of Upper State Road as a backup if this were not to work out. The other thing that will still potentially be happening, though, is recognizing the need to try to connect as many neighbors as possible. These communities were kind of cut off from the 202 Parkway when it was built, the Parkway Trail, so we'd like to try to provide them connections. So this is actually a Dulles Town Township-owned property that we would, you know, seek to acquire an easement on in order to build a separate trail over the Nishamity off of here to connect up to this trail. That would allow these neighborhoods to connect into the trail system. The second segment of the trail, in essence, is basically built. It would pick up where the trail under construction comes into the 202 Parkway Trail, continue over here to the Lower State Road and 202 Parkway. From there, people could have the option of accessing the trail that would be, that would be built as part of the White Eagle Lab redevelopment, or they could continue along Lower State Road and access the trails along Wells Road here. Either way, what we're trying to do is eventually get them into Central Park for the next connection to the trail system, which really proved to be our most difficult challenge. Coming out of Central Park, what we propose to do is the township-owned parcel here that was given as part of the open space for Dulles Town Station, we'd like to come down that property along the creek there. We know a couple of bridge crossings would be needed. And obviously, all of this would be subject to environmental permitting and cooperation, you know, with various landowners. At that point, we face the constraints of having the Bucks County Fish and Game property here that, you know, is owned by the county but leased out to the fishing game people. We have the Bucks County Public Safety Training Center here, and then the correctional facilities here. So obviously, this is a real challenge to get around these various areas. But what we'd like to do is to basically just, you know, right behind here, cross Turk Road. If you've driven down that road, you'll see there's the little bridge that crosses the creek that feeds into the Nishamity there. We'd be crossing over Turk Road on the other side of that bridge. Near that, there's a gate there that kind of takes onto county property now. It'd be further up that, closer to the Quarry Road intersection, because there are good sightlines there, and we feel that that's a, you know, place we could put a safe crossing in. From there, once you are on the county property, we would actually build a bridge over the Nishamity that would take you onto the island back there. From the island, we actually have three different proposed routings. And let me put a detailed slide? Yes, here we go. This gives you a better picture of what I'm speaking of. This is the creek tributary I was speaking of. So again, you'd be crossing, building a bridge over the Nishamity, coming back onto the island here, and coming off the island, we have three different options. One is to cross the, this is the Nishamity coming along here as well as back here. One, the preferred option, is to just not cross the Nishamity again, but to stay here, cross it here and come up. There's a path that would bring you up beside the Public Safety Training Center, which is fully fenced, so there's no inherent problem with, you know, people getting into the training center. That's the preferred option. Option B takes you back off the island with another bridge over into Bridge Point Park. Then, from there, you would cross roughly in the area of the old Edison-Furlong Bridge to get back over to the same general area. The only reason we presented option B is really in case the county, for some reason, eventually said, no, we're not amenable to people coming up beside the Public Safety Training Center. Option C basically follows the same routing as option B in terms of going into Bridge Point Park, but then rather than crossing back, it stays on that side of the creek and runs behind the shop where the pack and ship place and the gas station are, right on Eastern Road, just north of the Nishamity Creek Bridge. It crosses behind those properties. So once you get there, options A and B again have kept you, have moved you back to the western side of the creek. Option C has kept you on the eastern side. The challenge with option C is once you, it's a lot of private easements, because there's the shopping center, the gas station, and then once you cross 611, there's the property right there, and then there, it would require about four or five easements in the backyards of homes along Duane Road. Last week, when we presented this at a public meeting at the Dulles Town Library, these residents were not, you know, as expected, to be very supportive of that idea. They love being able to connect to the trail, but they would prefer almost that, you know, we build it to the 611 bridge and then stop and not take it behind their homes. Options A and B would basically bring you up beside the, behind the Barn Theater Plaza. There's a parking lot right at the end that would service trailhead location parking, so we wouldn't need to have, you know, additional parking. And then, if you've ever been back there, it's kind of like a fire loop around the theater. There's a giant retaining wall that we would potentially be able to either build at the base of or caddie or off of in order to then basically get us back across the Nishamity. Because either way, what happens is that down here, this blue designated area, this is county-owned land, is that we run out of land, and eventually, as you, if you travel along Alms House Road, you notice that there are really steep slopes that lead down to the creek. So eventually, you need to move back to the northern or eastern side of the creek, if you will, to continue with the route. So again, either A, B, or C eventually all get you down, you know, to the same general area. From there, we are completely on county land over to, and we stay on the northern side of the creek until you approach the, if you're familiar with the area where the Valley Road and the gravel parking lot is, where they, a lot of people fish and, you know, put in to stock the trout. Around that area, there's a pond back there. Somewhere in this vicinity, we would cross the Nishamity again in order to basically access what would be a new county park facility on county-owned land. We were proposing an ADA accessible fishing pier, a picnic shelter, restroom facilities potentially, a canoe and kayak launch site, various facilities there, a walking trail around the backside of the creek. The purple line here that I did not mention earlier, these are proposed to be connector trails. And this one would basically take you up to Pebble Hill Road, and there's a daycare center there that on the weekends is not obviously being utilized. So again, a great opportunity to make use of the existing parking lot for trailhead location parking. As a, this is showing that connector trail. And the other connector trail is that this is a property owned by Heritage Conservancy. And again, as you're coming out of the Valley Road Park area, we would be going across that property, get over to the Eight Arch Bridge. But more importantly, at this Bridge Valley of Furlong, there's a basin back here that there's currently existing trail that runs around the basin. By connecting to that trail and going on-road along Bridge Valley of Furlong, we're able to connect that neighborhood, this, excuse me, Amadon neighborhood, as well as the villages of Buckingham and Heritage Center and those neighborhoods as well. So again, we're trying to be able to feed people in to that park area as well as feed them into the trail. On the southern side, we would again have a connector trail that would run across, run parallel to Valley Road for just a short segment. This property has actually just been conserved under the Bucks County Open Space Program. And again, the trail easement has been provided that would connect into the estates of Warwick Lane Trail System, that would then again give us access to Mountain View, Warwick Woods, and Guinea Lane Park, as well as estates of Bucks County Country Club. So again, we've been able to make a lot of connections in this one area to the proposed trail system. Back when we had our public meeting last spring, people asked us also to investigate the potential of connecting Middle Bucks Institute Technology. We did look at that. The, even though the county owns all this property right along the creek, it basically, the creek, as you see, is running right adjacent to Valley Road there. And these are all privately-held streets, not township streets within Warwick Township. So that was not an option at that point. But with the recently-announced Route 263 improvements by PennDOT, they are established here at traffic light, right around, yeah, right here at this, where you feed into the Middle Bucks Institute. So basically, people will be able to go through that neighborhood, access this trail that's existing along Mill Road currently in the power line, that will then connect to this trail. So this is the Eight Arch Bridge here. So once you've come out of Heritage Conservancy, you'll be using the old Eight Arch Bridge to get back onto this side of the Nishamity. From there, the trail runs along county-owned property here to get to Mill Road, where the old bridge is. And from there, we have three different routing options again. Option A is our preferred option in terms of, it's dominated on county land and/or land owned by Heritage Conservancy. Again, it would connect up into an existing trail system within the estates of Dark Hollow, which would feed you into Dark Hollow Road. Options B and C, while they provide greater connectivity to these particular neighborhoods, the challenge is that although this is a Heritage Conservancy-owned parcel that we have already been in discussions with them, that we could obtain an easement on, once you get to Meeting House Road, you would have to be on-road for a very short segment. And it's, even though it's a dead-end road, we're trying as much as possible to minimize on-road segments. And unfortunately, the right-of-way there is not conducive to having a trail in the right-of-way. But anyway, B and C would then, like I say, take you up Meeting House Road. Option B takes you to a parcel that Warwick Township owns that's a based-in-access parcel that again leads to Dark Hollow. Option C basically takes you on East Roxbury Road through the Hampton Chase Development to Dark Hollow. Once you get to Dark Hollow Road, this is Dark Hollow Road. This became our second biggest challenge area in terms of, we're trying to eventually get over here to where the forks and the Nishamity are, so this is a little of the Nishamity coming in. We, in an ideal world, we'd love to access the Gin Mill campus of Dalva College. Unfortunately, according to their easement terms, or the terms of where they receive the land from the Warwick Foundation, trails are not currently allowed on the property. So that prevented us from being able to access their property. These orange properties are state-preserved agricultural parcels, that if you have any amount of state funding involved in preserving an ag parcel, you cannot put a trail on that because the theory is that every square inch of that property should be preserved for agricultural purposes. So that prevented us from having a trail on that segment. We looked at coming within the Pico Corridor, but if you've ever been down Dark Hollow Road to the Dark Hollow Bridge, you know how steep those embankments are. This basically would have had been a bridge about 80 feet up in the air and with a span of about 200 or 300 feet. So you can imagine how much that would have cost. So our solution is that, again, not the ideal solution, but the most cost-effective and one that would provide the connectivity we need, is that pedestrians will be routed along Dark Hollow Road, which again, after you've exited these subdivisions, it's a dead-end road. No one's really going down there for any purpose. And from there, there's an old road that does not connect through anymore. The residents, there are only two residents along that road, and years ago, they asked Warwick Township not to service the road anymore. But we're not making use of that because the township says that one day, they may, you know, want it serviced again. But there is a Heritage Conservancy easement on the parcel that runs between this old abandoned road and the Nishamity Creek that does allow for a hiking trail only. Bicycles or any type of wheeled vehicles are not allowed. So once pedestrians reach the end of the road, they'll be able to access along the creek that will then bring them over to Rushland-Jamison Road. Bicycles will follow the, there's a trail system as part of this riding of Warwick. The green line is actually an existing trail as well. So rather than take people behind the homes and, you know, through the neighborhood, we'd like to try to, via signage, encourage them to make use of this trail around Rushland Road. Once they reach the entrance of the subdivision, the bicycles will have to go on-road along Rushland-Jamison Road until where this road comes in, Hill Road. At that point, at this, there are two properties turned on the corner that Heritage Conservancy currently has easements on as well that allow for a trail. So we'll be able to do that. And then we're hoping that there's a 500-foot segment here, I tell you, reach Wilkinson Road, that we're hoping we would be able to get an easement from Dalva College on to allow just 500 feet in this, you know, distant corner of their property, so to speak. Otherwise, everyone can be on Walton Road, which again is not a heavily-traveled road whatsoever. And then, the last segment of the trail would be on Wilkinson Road. And again, it would be on-road. We, if you've ever driven down that road, you see it's heavily canopied. It's very narrow right-of-way, so there's not the opportunity to, you know, without acquiring a lot of private easements. And given that, again, it's not a heavily-traveled road, we'd rather not disturb the tree canopy and/or, you know, have to upset residents just for the sake of having a, this is probably less, you know, not even a mile long. And then that will feed you into Sacasford Road. The county owns the property between Sacasford Road and the creek here. And somewhere to the Valley Road property we mentioned earlier, this would be another county park facility with another canoe-kayak launch point, an ADA accessible fishing pier, a picnic shelter, and parking as well for this trailhead location. And from there, my middle and the Nishamity Creek project would continue on down the Nishamity. And that's it. So if they might have questions, comments?
Yes, so we had, we had a public meeting last Tuesday night at the Dulles Town Library. We had about 50, 51 people show up, and there was overwhelming support for the, for the project.
Paul, if there's any way residents can get this information, are you online somewhere?
Yes, the actual presentation from last Tuesday's workshop is online on the Bucks County Planning Commission website, which if you just go to the county website, go to Community Services, and click on Community Services, and it'll take you to another page that says Planning Commission. If you click on that, it says Upper Nishamity Trail Routing.
Great.
And it has my email address that you can feed comments or questions to.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Next, we have Dr. Felstine going to talk about open space as soon as we get reorganized here for a minute.
Here you go. Do you want to come back?
Dr. Felstine is the Chair of the Open Space Committee. And as soon as we get the lights on and out of your way...
Okay. That's fine, I thank you. Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, it's always my pleasure to come up here to give you an annual report. When I say the board, I mean all the staff and everybody else, including you, Stephanie Mason, of course, is a member of it, and also Margaret, and also Margaret here, but she's also helpful to us. I represent a committee that consists of the following members: Kelso, Tom Kelso, Jeffrey Fur, Stephanie Mason, Allison Hamilton, as an liaison, Barbara Lyons also as a liaison, and also Don Richardson. As you know, that the township consists of approximately 17,700 people, but it actually occupies a space of 15.54 square miles. And that represents 9,945.6 acres, 640 acres in a square mile. So in actual speaking, the whole township, if you take every inch of it, including everything has 9,945.6 acres. 739.8992 acres have been already given to us as a gift. We have many, many people who are interested in that, and they donated it to the township. And we have it. 233 acres has been preserved by the college, and 305.65 acres is part of the pine run. So the total amount is 1,278.5492 acres, or 12.855 of the total township is already preserved in open space, as we speak right now. Now, as you also know, that we have made every effort in the past and in the present to preserve all the open space we can. However, the facts are that the number of acres which are remaining in the township available to us is a very minimal amount. There's a couple acres here and there. We've attempted to contact, and even though that we only spend 75% of the allotment that is given to us, we are given by the county $620,408, which represents 75% of the total amount that should be spent. And the 25% additional to bring it up to 8, 87 to 10 should come from the township. But the township never allocated the money. They have never asked you to do it, and we're the only township in Bucks County I know, because I serve on Agriculture Preservation Board and on the Open Space Boards in day one. We are the only one who have been able to convince, educate, not coerce, just convince and educate people and to, and the person that has helped us immensely is sitting right there, our manager of the township, and she knows what I'm talking about. We have been hours and hours with people to convince them to make their 25% contribution instead of the township as a gift to the township for their own benefit, for tax purposes, but above all, as a good deed. And we have accomplished that. Now, you also know, as I mentioned to you, that the boards in the past and the present boards were always conscious of preserving open space. It goes way, way back. I know it because I've been here. I've been in Bucks County, and I've been in the Dulles Town Township this March 75 years. And I didn't come here as an infant either. So all I can say to you that I, I've seen this, and this is why we have this Central Park, which is a beautiful park of almost 100 acres, which is essentially available for the benefit and the pleasure of this citizen or for the benefit and the pleasure of this citizen or the residents of our township of 17,700 people. But actually, of course, more come, and it's available to kids, to people of middle-aged, older people, and all others. There's also another Central Park in Manhattan. And believe it or not, they only have 843 acres in Central Park in Manhattan. In plain English, they're 8.5 times bigger than we are. But they handle millions of people, and we have it here for a very small number. So we have actually accomplished something extraordinary to support our people up here and to offer them something wonderful. Now, as we go along, I want to mention to you that is, we're doing everything possible to allocate the money, as I said. Acres is becoming scarce, and those people who own any acres of any kind are willing to, to give, to preserve their land at very high prices, which we cannot afford. Because if a person has 10 acres, and if you can have 10 lots out of it, I mean, you can get $100,000 a lot, and even more, all depending on the areas. In the borough, as some of you may know, many people buy a house for $200,000, tear it down, and build a million-dollar house, because they like the location and like the things. It's becoming very difficult. So you as a board have allocated $310,209 of the $640,408 for the Shammany Greening Trail. You have already done that, which means that we have now remaining essentially available to us, $330,199 is still remaining to be spent. And we are making every effort and seeking properties to save this open space in our area. And this we're doing very judiciously and constantly, and we hope to do it. And my ambition is obviously to get this accomplished before I become an old man. So, and hopefully, I'm asking for all of you in the audience and all of you who are sitting on the board, if you know any place or anybody that you may think of, give us the name, give our name, and we'll contact those people and make an effort to do that. So in summation, we have accomplished an awful lot in the past. We're doing our best at the present time, even though, as I've mentioned before, the township by itself has never spent one penny as part of its 25% contribution. And this is an accomplishment by its own self, because it indicates the quality people that we have in the township who are willing to, after being approached, and as I said, educated, to do what is right. So I appreciate very much the opportunity that I've had over the years to help you. This may be the last annual meeting that I'll present this report, but whatever fate befalls me, you can be sure that I will always do my very, very best, because I believe in Bucks County, I believe in our township, I'll be buried in Bucks County, and I'm going to stay on as long as I can to do the very best I can. So may God bless you and the United States of America. I thank you very much. Any questions, by the way? Well, as a teacher, when we don't get any questions, it means two things. Either you haven't explained things right, or you're embarrassed to ask a question. I hope it's a lot better.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Felstine. Next is the visitors' public comments. Anyone have any comments they'd like to make? Okay, let's move on to announcements. Next meeting of the Board of Supervisors is scheduled for Tuesday, February 18th, 2014, at 7:00 PM. The administrative offices will be closed on Monday, February 17th, 2014, and observance of Presidents' Day. And ski tickets are now available. Please contact the administration offices to purchase. You notice Ryan and Barbara are not here tonight, but rest assured, Barbara is watching. If you know Barbara, you know she's watching, and she's going to grade me on this, so occasional round of applause will probably help my score, so I appreciate it. As far as the minutes approval, we're going to table the minutes until the next meeting. The reports will start, Solicitor.
Let me report at the moment, Mr. Chairman.
Chief?
Nothing to report, sir.
No township engineer, so we'll go to the manager.
I have two requests. First is, they're both training-related. The first is for myself to be able to attend the PellRez training in March in Penn State. Because there's an overnight stay, it requires board approval, as well as the APMM Conference in May. Both of those have funding available in our budget. Would look for the board's okay there. In addition, Karen Sweeney, Director of Parks and Recreation, looking to attend the Recreation, Pennsylvania Park Recreation Society. Again, that requires an overnight stay. Money is budgeted in Park and Recreation for Karen to attend that as well. And both allow for us to obtain continuing education credits.
I have a motion.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second? Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And that's.
Supervisor comments. Ken?
Just one, just to highlight to everybody that the police pension plan and the non-uniform pension plan was audited, and came back with glowing remarks. No audit findings, so that was all in good shape. So, good job, Ken and Stephanie, for conducting, getting that audit finished up. That's it. Thanks.
John?
Yeah, thank you. Only one thing. Just a comment, or rather, a compliment to Dick Johns and the road crews. They've certainly been through the wringer this winter, I guess we all have. But some feedback we've gotten, and in your own observation, I guess, too, but some good feedback about, I know all municipalities do their best, but I've heard some good things. People couldn't wait to get to Dorset Township during these storms, because they really had a good handle on the roads, even in the sub-zero temperatures and everything. So I don't know what you're doing there, but it's.
Just working hard.
There you go. All right, well, thank you to all of them, no, all the crew. That's all I have. Thank you.
And unfortunately, your work isn't done.
Yeah.
Which brings me to, to one thing, we have information that comes, goes out from the township, and you get emails. So if you're not on the Google group, I strongly suggest you go to the website and sign up or call the township, they'll tell you how to do it. You get weather alerts, emergency information, left turn signal at Edison Furlong is up and running. So, once or twice a week, you get some really good information, and I think you'll enjoy getting the timely information from the township. And the other thing is, this is the last Board of Supervisors meeting for Sandra, so when it's over, if you can say goodbye, even though you may see her in the next day or two, but you won't see her at meetings like this. So, thanks, Sandra. We know where you're at, and you know where we're at, so we'll keep the doors open. Next is new business, exonerating the tax collector.
Mr. Chairman, what happens by law is that if someone has not paid their real estate taxes by December 31 of a given year, the tax collector is required to certify those lists of delinquents to the Tax Claim Bureau, who then has the responsibility to collect those taxes. So what you're doing is just acknowledging that and exonerating the tax collector for that uncollected taxes, because they've been transferred to the county. So the motion would be to approve the exoneration of the tax collector for uncollected 2013 taxes.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on new business is the 2014 trash hauler permits.
Yes, you have a memo regarding the 2014 trash hauler permits. These are all the haulers that would be licensed to collect in Dorset Township for residential and commercial purposes, and we would recommend the approval so that we can let them know they're licensed again to do that. They've met all the requirements.
I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve. You have a second.
Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is land development, a sketch, the Getzberger Track Sketch Plan on Lower State Road. Won't steal any Mr. Zaveta's thunder, but while he's getting squared away, it's on Lower State Road across from the Y. You'll see, there's a sign up there, I believe, saying for sale or something to that effect, next to the, help me, Stephanie, Pine View?
Lake, Pine Run at Lakeview.
Pine Run at Lakeview.
And for the public's edification, when a sketch plan is discussed with the supervisors, there are no approvals granted. Basically, Mr. Zaveta wants to show the board what he has in mind and get some feedback, and then he can proceed to go forward with the normal process. Those of you like me who've suffered many uncomfortable moments at Dr. Getzberger's dental office, when that little building in the back is torn down, there'll be a few people who'll be very happy. Mr. Zaveta, are you making the presentation, or?
Rich, we're going to stop you right there. We need to either use, can you get the microphone, because we're going to need to use the microphone so that we can hear it, because you're on TV. Sorry, I just don't want you to start and anybody at home to miss any of them.
Good evening. Thanks for seeing us this evening. I know you've had a busy agenda, so I'll keep it brief this evening. I'm here today to speak with you about the Getzberger Track. It's three acres. It is adjacent to, as you'd mentioned, the Lakeview facility. It's, basically, we have an opportunity, I'm in a due diligence period currently, so very shortly, I have to step up and make a decision to actually purchase the property. The township was gracious enough to provide us an opportunity to meet with township staff in early January, followed up by a meeting with the Planning Commission. So my goal is to certainly collect any thoughts and comments as to give me peace of mind that the project makes as much sense to the township as it appears to myself and our internal staff. Basically.
Do you have a Vanna White here to help you with this?
Greg's as close as we got.
Greg, I would use the easel. I would bring the easel with me. Or you can use the microphone at the podium.
The property consists currently of two, three structures. One, actually four, one being a spring house. The fabled legend, which I've been fortunate not to experience, is the Getzberger Dentist Office, which is here. That's a structure that it's our intention to take down. Travis, can you hold up this other photo boards for me, please? There's a small spring house located over in this vicinity over here, which is just a pleasant historic spring house. This is the main structure itself that you see. That resides right here. Opposite the main structure is a barn. The barn resides here. This is the dental office that will be coming down. This is the spring house, which resides in this lower quadrant over here. The property really is, has some extraordinary features, but also has some significant challenges. In the house itself, there are some attractive pieces of original millwork and so forth, interesting stairs, but there's also some amazingly challenging kitchen facilities, and I think the first dishwasher ever invented still resides here, as well as some other very special architecture in different areas. The house predominantly consists of the primary structure, two winged appendages, plus what appears to be an addition. There's a date up in the top corner that says 1920. I haven't done the research yet, that's right up on the top. I believe 1920 would reflect a significant time where some of these additions were consummated, but the house looks far older based on its timber construction and facilities of the stone, window jams, et cetera, that would be indicative of an earlier home. Our plan is to clean up, remove, I should say, many of these additions, go back to the main structure of the house, and amidst that, Travis, could you give me the other board, please? Put that one around for me. So, the main house, take off the plaster, it is an all-stone structure, and restore the house into its original grandeur, as well as some additions, some obvious significant feature updates, remembering that's the house portion. The barn resides as shown here. This is the barn. We're using a unique methodology to make sense of connectivity and garages. As you remember, perhaps remember, we did Pine Tree Farm some years ago, so we have a pretty good handle on what works and how that we can maybe even pick up a few enhanced features in the site. The concept is to go to more individual home styles, replicating a period of architecture to have contiguous flavor and play well off of one another, whereas Pine Tree was a specific theme, that the color schemes, the unit mixes were very inherently similar. These would have individual homes, and there'll be a total of six, coming around basically 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. The use that we're in is R4B2Us. We're using this individual structure as the primary house. Also, each, as we learned in Pine Tree, parking is something we need to plan for and really make sure that we have a good handle on to make a successful community. Two-car garages for each unit. We're using a connector corridor between the two that's fully covered and enclosed, so in essence, to enter your garage, you'd go into this vestibule connection, make a left into this garage, make a right into the other. That theme carries all the way around. Even the main house has the new two-car garage, the barn has a new two-car garage with that same connectivity between the two. So that theory is carried out to give that contiguous look of architecture. Are adjoining, Travis, could you see the board, the layout board, please? Site plan. Okay. The closest thing about us, this is an existing garage. Travis, could you see their color board of the garage, please? The photo boards. I took the opportunity to stop and meet with this gentleman, and just to show him what our concepts were. His name is Rob Brishetta. The garage that he has is a pretty commercial-looking structure, and speaking with him, he said at one point in the history of the world, this was like a furniture shop. So it's a truly commercial-looking facility, and it sits right here to, I guess that would be our southwest portion. Our goal is to heavily landscape this in. I also spoke with him, and he seemed very amenable. He has a beautiful stone house in the front, nicely fixed up, and we talked about maybe collaborating with him to do some improvements of this, just for both of our sakes, and so he was very excited. I can report that he likes the project. Should we go on with it? He said he'd be glad to attend as a neighbor, showing support. So I've shared the same information packs that the board has. So that's what I would see, the neighbor that we most concern. This house is here, his garage is here, his swimming pool is here. The concept, again, high-end, architecturally plausible, correct houses with a very interesting feel. Can I have a single cul-de-sac again, please, Travis? We're very fortunate, when Lakeview was gone, this road, the road was fully improved, so we have curbs, sidewalks across the entire facility, so stormwater curbing, street widening has all taken place already for us. We're proposing the full specification width of the road, 26 feet coming in, doing a full sidewalk loop around it, using some perhaps more interesting materials than just concrete, but we're really looking for little to no relief. I'll let Greg Glitzer from Gilmore Associates, our project engineer, speak some of the details. I'll let Greg Glitzer from Gilmore Associates, our project engineer, speak some of the specifics. But again, this is our concept. We're excited with the potential opportunity. And as I mentioned, Greg will touch on engineering briefly, and then I'll answer any questions the board may have, and then get out of your way this evening.
Just one quick question. You had mentioned that the total plot is three acres?
Yes, sir.
And so there, in the front, I see you have quite a bit of open space up against Lower State Road?
Correct.
So that would leave you about how much per lot, then?
Well, I believe, Greg, we have, this is allowable 40% in per view of surface design.
Well, yeah, the zoning allows for, or requires, 5,000-square-foot lots. The lot, though, is, the unit that Rich talked about is actually a twin. The zoning allows twins, that's that B2 use. So you're going to have to provide at least a 5,000-square-foot lot. Now, it's our intention to set up a condo association for ownership. We'll delineate the lots just for zoning compliance. Right now, we believe that we're fully compliant with zoning. And that setback from Lower State Road is governed by the township's collector road setback. So it's about 65 feet minimum is required to the ultimate right-of-way line of Lower State.
Thank you.
And specifically, Greg, if you could just talk about the number of units that's permitted?
Yeah, so go through the, and just to talk a little bit about the use first, the B2 use is a use by right in that, in that R4 zone. I know Rich was contrasting and comparing that with Pine Tree Farm, which is a conditional use, the B15 use, but this is a straight by-right use. Going around, we have a certain degree of natural resources, some slopes. The spring house, there's a little wetland that comes out of it, the spring house, obviously, so it's a true spring house. But we're also required to delineate a minimum of 20% of open space. Running through all the net buildable site area calculations and applying the allowable density for that use, we'd be allowed to use 12 dwelling units, or employ 12 dwelling units for the, for the site. So that's more of a, you know, much higher density, I think, than we would, so it would really support, but it's a good benchmark to say that, okay, you know, how are we? We think we're a fully by-right plan. Always good to calculate the maximum density, just to kind of benchmark yourself against that. So we're at six, is four, four brand-new, and two, one adaptive reuse and one renovation. Other stuff that, I won't get into too much detail, again, it's, we'll have stormwater management in the rain garden in the central bowl. We discussed that with the planning commission, and now we're going to incorporate some of their comments as well. I'll have some supplemental stormwater management in the rear of the site. Stephanie made us aware of an issue with drainage down that ultimately, I guess, ends up at Dulles Town Hunt with the railroad. We're going to look at that as we get into detailed engineering and those kind of things. So we're really at a comment gathering period right now, and really happy to take all comments.
Our only topic that we wish for some relief on is, if you could maybe just speak to the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, we do, while we're compliant with zoning, we're by-right with zoning, we don't see any need for any variances or anything like that. There is one item of relief of the subdivision ordinance. We know that we, in order to implement this plan and give it the feel that we think is important, it's a, it's a design modification to the cul-de-sac bulb geometry, basically to shorten the bulb diameter by, or bulb radius by 10 feet. We think that's important, because Rich talked about some of the adjacent structures, and as we were, as we were planning the site, looked at that 60-foot bulb radius or 120-foot bulb diameter, which is a really large right-of-way bulb. It forces the units out to the perimeter of the site. So we think that impacts the whole look of the site, and obviously puts us in much closer proximity to some of the, maybe the less desirable features that we're trying to buffer. So we would be asking for subdivision waiver on that. And there's always a few technical waivers that come about with the, with the development review, so.
So I understand what you're looking for tonight. First, if the board's got any questions or concerns or thoughts, and then we'll ask anyone out in the audience. That would be wonderful. Ken?
I have a couple of questions. Just, and I appreciate, most of this will be covered in the upcoming months in the planning commission meetings and such, but just a couple of things you mentioned, the relief you need for the bulb, for the cul-de-sac. Presumably, you'll get some input from fire department and that kind of thing. It'll still be, I know it's still by code road width, is that what you said?
Yeah, the bulb, the actual cartway width would be compliant. We propose a private road, it's just the diameter, the outer diameter of a loop. We'd ask for some relief there. We'd be fully prepared to show the emergency services what kind of, you know, how we would maneuver through that, to talk about the, sort of the continuous driveway depressions that we will have around it, that do provide, you know, a substantial amount of hardscaping for, you know, for an emergency vehicle, if they should need to go and do a, do a loop around it. So I think we have some ways to, to address any real, real concerns. It's just, if we do that, all our setbacks measure then from the, from the bulb, and that just forces everything outwards.
Sure. And lastly, and I don't want to hold you any longer, but you say you, this is pretty close to a by-right or by, you know, plan. If you, and you're talking about half the density that's permitted, if you were to go to that density, I appreciate the max, which would be 12 units, not obviously giving you the concept or look or feel that you want, would there be considerable more relief needed then, or is that still, was that a pretty close to right, by-right plan, too?
That's pretty close as well. You'd be looking at, you know, more of a duplex type of a twin. We have what we call a loose attachment for the twins, where the garages actually have a, have an attachment. Maybe, Rich, you can kind of discuss that, how we characterize these as semi-detached units.
I'm not trying to steer you, I'm just, it was more curiosity, and I think it's an attractive plan, but I don't, I wasn't steering you that way.
Our goal, we saw this as a great opportunity to do something that's interesting. You can see traffic lights in the borough when you're standing right at the entryway, when you look towards town, the sidewalk connectivity, the trails and the other features running back across to the Y and access to the college. For us, this is a great opportunity. We've had numerous people, clients, asking us, will you ever do something like Pine Tree again? This, for us, takes it up, again, Tebressal is nice, Pine Tree is very nice. I think this takes it up an additional notch, and we simply would prefer to work with, amidst these original structures. And when you do some square footage counts on them, they're going to work out to be around 3,000, 3,300 square feet on the both the original structures. The houses are going to carry through. The one thing I learned at Pine Tree Farm, I thought they were more than adequately sized, and we did the designs averaging around 2,500 to 2,800. Several times a year, we're back with Sinclair, talking about how to do additions inside and converting addicts and finishing basements. So that really, again, the national comment, smaller, smarter, smaller, smarter. For us, our clients, many of them are scaling down out of 6, 8,000 square feet, so for them, a scale down is really 3,500 square feet. And while they may think they can be happy at 2,000, they really can. So we feel this speaks directly to that market. With the steep roofs, the vertical architecture, we're looking, many of them to do three stories, elevators servicing lower level through, through the third floors.
I don't have any other comments. I guess, if it's like your other projects, it should be very nice, so.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from our blue-ribbon panel?
Rick?
Chief has it.
Mr. Hendrick?
The new units, once they're all done and completed, what price are they going to be?
We haven't gotten the full budgets, but these would all be loosely starting at $1 million.
He has a sign-off sheet over here for anybody interested.
I can deposit. Rick, chief has a question.
I just, I have a question regarding the reduction in the bulb. The, you're saying that, can a fire truck get down there and totally loop that bulb without going on to a residence property?
It would stay in the right-of-way. It would require, when we get down to the curb line, we have a, you know, almost a continuous depression of a concrete apron for the driveways. We would either extend those to provide that hard surface that is almost, basically makes up the, makes up the difference in the pavement, doesn't make it up in the right-of-way. So we'll have to document that, if that's, is that, you know, a concern, to be able to turn in there as opposed to pulling straight through and backing out.
My concern with that would be, with the fire trucks coming down there and then putting their pads down?
Yeah, on a level.
Is even wider than the actual width of the vehicle. So if the pads that come out to stabilize the fire trucks are going off into the grass or whatever, because you have to extend your pads, it could become an issue.
Right.
So that's something that I think you really need to talk about with the fire services and their biggest trucks back there.
Yeah, it's a good comment. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Zaveta, thank you. I hope we gave you some kind of input and guidance, and we appreciate you, and look forward.
Great, I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next order of business is the bills list, February 4th, 2014.
I make a motion in first.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Boards and commission presentations. Looks like Mr. Schwartz, when he gets it together, is first up, if I'm reading everything. I did not devise the order, but I'm sure there was some reason for this order being set up the way it is, and I don't really want to get into that. I didn't, I was...
I had no control over the order.
Knew it was going to degenerate into that, so.
Are you skipping the zoning hearing, or is that yours? Oh, okay. Yeah, thanks.
We've tried that in the past. I think whatever Lee's strategy is, you can see him after the meeting, and next year you may...
Next year, we'll be starting with, and we do rotate it every other year, we...
Whoever's the shortest goes first next year. Shortest speech.
Oh, okay, shortest speech.
Leader on, while you get the attention, go for it.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of the Ways and Means Committee to bring the update to the, to the board and residents who are watching. 2014 is underway as far as our planning, and I guess I'm going into my fourth year on the committee. I guess I'd characterize our evolution as going from panic to planning, which is a good thing. So that means that conditions have changed drastically for the good in the last three years. Our purpose is, as an advisory council, we provide information and ideas to help the board and township staff make the best possible decisions, to safeguard the financial condition of the township. As always, when I get the chance, I welcome input, get a better understanding of how your tax dollars are spent, come share your good ideas, join us on the last Thursday of each month at 7:00 PM. We rarely see visitors, but they're always very welcome. And of course, I definitely urge you to participate in the special budget work sessions with the board that goes roughly from September to November. Our core financial objectives are to track the monthly budget via key variables. We project, and we've gotten better at it, a multi-year impact of the decisions that we make today. Plan capital spending to make necessary improvements and preserve the infrastructure. Provide prudent financing strategies. Be alert to liabilities and identify options to prevent negative impacts. In the last year, and I characterize it as smoother than most of the others that I've been here, but our analytical tools, data quality, and the financial reporting has become timelier and even more usable. I particularly like the formal budget presentation that was made in 2013. The township manager and the finance manager spearheaded that, and they put that together after review and suggestions from our committee. And we believe that it strengthened the reasoning, kind of streamlined the process, and placed the budget ownership and presentation back in the best hand, which is the financial people and management of the township. The last projections now show, and it would have come out at the previous budget meetings and sessions, is that we see at this point, depending on how much Dick John spends on salt this winter, but we see at this point a workable budget without shortfall into 2018. Things can change, but we've gone from looking at, looking over the cliff by 2013 to where 2018, we look like we might get by. So I would view that as great news. For 2014, our objective is to, at this point, document the standard operating procedures for our budget model. It's a rather complex piece of work that's been put together by one of our members, primarily structured in Excel, but provides exceptionally good data. And we also want to document, or at least help document, the capital project prioritization. We want to preserve the process tools and continuity in case we lose somebody unexpectedly. We'd like to recommend process to track progress and allocate funds for approved projects that overlap budget years. I think that's one thing we've kind of missed. We approved a set of projects this year, but they don't all get done, and we kind of lose track of them once we go into the next. Help optimize project completion when needed at best cost by balancing our internal capacity and outsourcing when the board deems fit. And our other objective, or one of the other ones, is to publish three to five meaningful charts that give our citizens periodic snapshots of how the township is doing in the interest of transparency. We want to explore economical and sensible financing options for large capital projects. In the past, as we've done, we'd like to look for it again to optimize the use of the debt service fund. We continue to refine the multi-year forecast as we get better at what we're doing. And a couple of things to look out on the horizon for, minimize the impact of the Affordable Care Act on future health care costs, and monitor the changes in unfunded pension liabilities and present alternative approaches to addressing them. Hopefully, that's quick enough to qualify me for first place next year.
Lee, just, the fourth Wednesday, you said Thursday. You did.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jeez, and I come every Wednes-- oh, that's why nobody shows up. I give them the wrong date. So it is the fourth Wednesday, my apologies.
Any comments, questions, thoughts?
Thank you.
And I, everyone realizes you're the guiding force on that committee, but is there anyone else that kind of shows up and helps you?
We do have a few other people. Our liaison is Ryan, and we certainly welcome everybody to come, of course. Ed Ebenbach is a very strong member, he's hard at work back on the TV set back there. We have Brenda Bray, and we're looking for a new, at least one, possibly two appointees that I believe that you've, that you've interviewed. And of course, Ed Denton, our secretary, who's anxious to give up the secretary duties as quickly as he can.
Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Mark Shiner, and for Traffic and Advisory. And Lee's kidding a bit, but their committee, the new member all the time, becomes the secretary. And that, that has really worked out from what I've seen. The new person gets to get more involved, gets to learn everyone's name because they're taking the minutes, et cetera, and so that might be something the other committees want to, may want to take a look at.
We gave them about a six-month grace period, and then we said, we need a secretary, and it worked out really well. But we have eight members that are all based on district, and eight voting members at least, and you can see the names there. Couple of us have been there since the inception in 2005, myself being, and Dory have been there since 2005, and the other ones have been there for quite a while. Kevin Green was just appointed for this year, so has finally got a replacement for District Three that would have been vacant for about a year and, a little over a year and a half, not quite a year and a half. Chief Logan's a valuable liaison for the committee, always has, you know, excellent input, and thank you for your involvement. It's always a pleasure to have you, have your input. In terms of accomplishments, it's very much an operational committee. We're driven really by citizens' concerns and issues that they note. So the Ouija ball for 2014 isn't always very good, because it's based really on what the citizens bring to the table. But every month, we review traffic statistics and determine actions. We have some guidelines we've developed to determine when we need to take action on a speeding issue or whatever. We have the ability to, we have a web form online, we have, we obviously take letters, actual letters, emails, and sometimes the citizens will come for the monthly meetings, and we'll take their concerns face-to-face, which is the best way. So we review new development plans for, you know, any traffic concerns. This year's been very light, last couple of years have been real light in that area, since there's not a lot of development going on, obviously. And the one thing I wanted to point out to the board, and Ken noticed this last month when he visited, and Rick, you know this too, is a lot of times, PennDOT takes forever to get back to us, and it seems like that just is, that gets longer and longer and longer, and we have something on the old... And we have something on the old business that's been there since March, March of last year. And it's probably the nature of the beast, but, and I don't know what we can do about it, but it does really, it's kind of embarrassing that we just have to constantly just wait and wait and wait. So just one thing to point out to the board. Rick does attend a lot of our meetings and he's, even Ryan's the official liaison, he's there quite oft, quite often, has been a real good voice of input for us too. Okay, in terms of next year, I mean, really, we'll continue with monitoring the stats. Those stats are produced monthly by Chief Logan's staff. Hopefully they'll continue, I know there's going to be some challenges this year. Hopefully they'll continue and it'll be refreshed pretty often. They do really help when concerns are pointed out because literally we can say, hmm, the statistics don't seem to indicate that, or the statistics agree, you know. So we do have some concerns with some of the traffic pattern changes that have been introduced by the Parkway. Some of the signals may need some changes, things like that. There are some subtle changes that we've noticed throughout the township. And of course, the adaptive lighting project will start this year and hopefully early next year complete. So that will be an interesting one to, because that's where probably a lot of our complaints come from. We get those complaints all the time, as you did too, I'm sure, Stephanie. So, okay. Any questions, concerns?
Yeah, I have one question, Mark. Is there anything on the website that people can go to, residents can go to, will help them understand what you guys, what the committee does?
Yep.
Who they should contact and, you know, like you do collect the data on a monthly basis, just to educate them as to, you know, people comment, you know, this guy's, I see this, these guys speeding on my road all the time. So how you collect the data and how you process it and what to do.
Yeah, not that so much. We do have a brochure on traffic calming and how that's, what that is all about. We have the web form. We probably could increase some of the stuff there. The stats need a lot of explanation to understand. I don't think they're something I would want to publish.
Yeah, I wouldn't publish the stats, but I would.
But yeah, yeah, we could definitely do that. It'd be no issue at all with doing that, I'm sure.
And I think it's been a big innovation in the last couple of years, putting that accessibility to the, to the public.
Right.
I think it's been great. And not only that, and I said at the last board meeting, that left turn signal heading north on 611 that's now working, turning on as in furlong, you guys played a big part in that and picked it up and picked it up.
We've been complaining about it for years.
Exactly. You kept picking the ball up, you kept picking the ball up, and now I'm excited about the next meeting, we can attack 611 and Arm's House.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think it's important for everybody to understand that if, if we are aware of individual violators, that that is something that should be contacted, the police department should be contacted directly for that, to let us deal with that individual on a one-on-one basis. I think the main objective of the Traffic Advisory Committee is if we get a number of people that live in a particular area that are perceiving a speeding problem or a general safety hazard, where maybe a street lights are out or the, the timing of street, red lights are out, that that's something that can be addressed with the Traffic Advisory Committee and it gives us an opportunity to look at it, address it. And a lot of times, we'll get, we'll get phone, field phone calls, quite often, the police department, about speeding on a particular road within the township. We try to be very proactive over the last couple of years. We have at least four different speed timing equipments that are constantly out in the township, where we're being more proactive, where if somebody calls to complain, I can pull the data up immediately and explain to them exactly what is occurring on their street. And a lot of times that works. Sometimes perception is worse than the reality. And that's a lot of the things that we deal with on a, on a monthly basis with the Traffic Advisory Committee. What is real and what is perceived.
Yep.
We've seen that. Residents come to the meeting and show them the data and we put the machines out there and.
Yeah, those boards have been the best, those newer boards, because they collect the data.
And we did, in our capital purchases for 2014, I had, we purchased the fourth of our equipment. Just to let you know, the new one is very nice.
And where will be located?
It is the upgraded version of the 2012 purchase. It's all online. I can access it online and there are pictures.
Nice.
So if you're speeding, we're going to get a picture of your car and we'll come find you.
Awesome. Super.
Thanks. Might I have any questions for Mark? Thanks, Mark. Next up is Ed Evenbach, who is in the back and ready to stroll out and update us on the Telecommunities Advisory Board tab. They're the ones that make this TV show possible.
Give me a second here, please. Be better if I started at the beginning. Thank you for your patience and waiting for me to start. There's some general information here that probably is of interest to you. Our mission has been around for a while and the thing that's, that's really happened that has evolved in the last couple of years is we've moved from really focusing on cable franchise negotiations and monitoring the cable providers to becoming advisors to the board and the staff regarding more general communications matters. We branched out into the TV station, as many of you, many of you know, and we played a part in the social media startup in this past year. And those are all things that have broadened our mission. So communications is now right up there on the top line. There's three of us in the merry band. Joe Salvati, who is sitting back there, mostly focuses on the programming side. Kurt Kraus, who's been with us since 2003 and really is the, the father of most of the equipment design that, that we've used. And I've been on the group since 2008. We have a new liaison this year, Ken Snyder, and I am completely remiss in not mentioning that our staff liaison is Sandra Zadel, who we are really going to miss dearly, but we're, I'm happy to report that we have a new assistant in the back, Ashley Thompson, who has come on board in the last year and is now going to fill in, fill that role for us. So we wish Sandra well. She's actually gone back. She's sitting in my chair, I see, so take care of it. Anyway, we meet the fourth, the second Monday of every month at 6:30 at night. We have a great deal of fun and the public would, if you came, I think you'd have a good time. So we would welcome you to come. We did a few things in 2013. Our historical role has been to work on franchise renewals. We've been working on it for a year. We're basically just wrapping it up now. I think we've made some progress in what we've gotten done. So hopefully we'll be able to report to the board before very long that that's been concluded. As I mentioned earlier, we did in fact help to perform a study on social media. One of our members is a pretty big user of social media, two of us are not. So two of us really had to get educated. And I, I'm happy to say I was one of the uneducated one and I've just gone onto Facebook for the first time.
Very nice picture.
Very nice. And I'm, I'm one of the 360 up there. Anyway, it, we hope to do more of that in this coming year. One of the most important things we did is to develop a long-range plan. We're sitting on what amounts to about $50,000 worth of equipment and probably if we were to add up the labor to put all this in, 100, 150, $200,000 worth of, of donated labor to put this, put this system together, and guess what? It's not going to last forever. So we need to have a plan of what happens when these cameras wear out, the microphones wear out, et cetera. So we put such a plan together, we predicted the life of the equipment and what sort of equipment will be around when the time comes to make these changes. And that plan says in 2018, 2019 or so, probably we'll need to replace all of the cameras. And at that point, we will probably make a transition to high definition. So that's part of what we've been working on this past year is putting together a credible plan that deals with both the equipment side and the programming to support it. Which brings me to programming. In 2004, we started with exactly 0% of live video. We had a bunch of billboard slides that repeated endlessly, hour after hour. In 2008, we added board of supervisors meetings, which probably was three hours a day or so and the rest of the time was billboard slides. We have now gotten, for the period of time between 6:00 AM and midnight, we've got ourselves up to almost 50% of the time we have programming other than, other than billboards and slides. And it's rather interestingly split between environmental stuff, seniors meetings that we actually record the meetings for SEBRAT and play them back at various times during the day, the supervisors meetings themselves, and that constitutes roughly 75% of the total that's on there. But as many of you know, we've been putting the arm on you to get other programming onto the channel, and we'll be talking about that in a minute. 10% in parks programs, 9% in other. So our goal is to get ourselves higher than 45% and get up into a much better number where we have a lot more individual programs. In this past year, we continued web streaming. I'm happy to report that the number of visits are up about 12% over the year before and nobody in the room would be surprised to find that access by mobile devices doubled from 2012 to 2013. Some of those mobile devices are sitting right here in the front of the room, watching things online. But we get a, we get a fair amount of, of access to our channel on the web. And video replays, between 20 and 100 visits per meeting, agenda and minutes between 10 and 70. Often there's more people who are watching our meetings online than are in the room. So we think it's been a valuable addition to our, our repertoire. We did help the township deploy their website and as always, we had to do some maintenance, added some equipment, did lots of things within this room, including adding a public wireless facility, which some of you have found out about. So these, we continue to work on the equipment and try to keep it up to date and to make it better. 2014, not surprisingly, programming is the major topic at the top of the list. We want to continue working with our fellow boards and commissions to develop additional programming. We have in mind a bike and hike trails video. We've purchased the camera for that. I'm with delay in that. I'm trying to test the camera and make sure the thing works before we send people out on the trail with a helmet camera and try to take a video that doesn't work. Camera's been on my desk. I'm, I'm almost done, ready to turn it over. We are working on a planning commission video and we'll be meeting within the next week or so to sit down for a dry run on a who we are and what we do video that explains the planning commission function. Joe has been, been stealing things from PennDOT and getting them on under the guise of traffic. And so we have a bunch of little three-minute and four-minute videos that are, that are on the channel and we hope to get a lot more of that. And we have plans to work with the Parks and Recreation people to, to get some of our programs and some of the, some of the parks also on video and on the channel. It's by those efforts that we intend to update, upgrade the amount of programming we carry. We're also going to work with Sinclair to do something on emergency management. And although you may not have noticed it, we this past year developed another source in the Doylestown Historical Society. There is a video that's up there now entitled Intrepid Explorer Henry Geil, The Forgotten Explorer from Doylestown. It's a very interesting video. The Historical Society put it together. They were nice enough to allow us to put it on and it's a very interesting history of a, of a guy who lived in this area, was a very famous person when he's alive and is, for the most part, completely forgotten today. That runs, I think, twice a day.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, 9:00 AM and 9:00 PM, I believe. Yes, you're right. So maybe the Historical Society's got more stuff. Oh, I failed to mention, and this would, this would relate to you. We do intend to take that same helmet camera and strap it to the head of a child going down the slide in the, in New Kids Castle. So once the bikes and hikes people bring it back in one piece, then we'll, we'll turn it loose with the kids. All right, so that's, that's the programming side. One of the ways we're going to have to make sure we make headway this way is to regularly measure the progress, how much, what our content is. So we're going to put in place a metric by which we can review that during our meetings. We will complete the Comcast franchise renewal negotiations. I suspect by March will be done. We intend to look into how we expand the social media footprint. The 360, 280 figures we have now are interesting, but not stellar. So if there are ways that we can expand and, and develop more followers, we're going to see if we can figure out ways to do that. We also intend to keep working on things that have to do with this meeting and this meeting room. We've received a variety of requests over the years about assessing people's participation in this meeting in non-traditional ways. We had one woman run in here somewhere in the last year, out of breath. She was watching a program on TV, wanted to participate, drove over here. I don't know whether she got a ticket or not. She didn't report that. And she came breathlessly to the podium and announced that she had just done all this because she wanted to make a point in the meeting. Well, some people want to phone in, some people want to email in, some people want to participate on Twitter or Facebook, and these are all possible things we could do these days, which we hope to explore, both with the supervisors as to their interest in this kind of participation, with Mr. Garten and the supervisors as to what the rules permit, and then assess the technological possibilities. We also think we can help the backroom effort. We use software now to produce the online version of the, of the program and it also prepares the meeting documents. So some of those meeting documents might be able to be prepared in a, in a new, new fashion and we intend to look into that. Maybe some of you are squinting at that type over there on the screen. So improving the projection clarity and quality might, might be helpful in that regard. We have other various things, upgrade video overlay capabilities, remote lighting controls, so we don't have to come running out of the room and rip the picture off the wall to turn the lights off and on. There's ways we could do that in a somewhat smoother fashion. This is more housekeeping to update our mission statement, which hasn't been done since, I think, the late 90s. So that, that really needs some work. Implement an improved emergency management technical communications plan. We're on the verge of doing that to improve the township's communications capabilities during an emergency. And lastly, we really need to document all the stuff we've done so that if we get hit by a bus, somebody can figure out what it is and, and continue, keep it in operation. So those are our objectives for 2014 and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any comments? I just have one. The programming is very, very good. And the show is The History of Geil, G-E-I-L. If you're a Doylestowner and you'd be amazed what this man did. It's a 40-minute?
42 minutes, yes.
I guarantee you will not turn it off. It is that good.
It's color, it's of good production values, it's beautifully shot.
That's, the Historical Society made it.
Right.
I mean, it's top-notch professional, but it's amazing. This man, I mean, he traveled the world, gave lectures throughout the world, thousands of people attended.
Took pictures of everything he did in a time when they, taking pictures meant you carried plates of glass around.
So nine o'clock, AM and P, based on your sleeping schedule, The History of Geil, G-E-I-L. It's a test next month. Thanks, Ed.
9:95.
Next up is Public Water and Sewer
Next up is Public Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, Mr. Ed Harvey.
Evening. My name's Ed Harvey, Chairman of the Public Water and Sewer Advisory Board. I don't have no show, so this is pretty basic. We were basically tasked to look at all the unsued areas in the township. Our main focus was the Pebble Ridge Pebble Woods area. After many years and stuff like that, we finally got the approval from DEP for the sewer in the Pebble Ridge area. Basically, the plan with the sewer in that area is it's just going to be a pipe in the street. The three-end component planning was prepared by Eric Janikin. Did I say that right?
Janekka.
Janekka, from CKS Engineering. We're working with the process, with the township staff on the future stuff coming up. We also are just taking a peek at the other areas in the township on the east side of 611. Basically getting the same kind of information that we did before, soils, any issues and stuff like that. So that's basically all I got. Any questions?
When do you meet? And can you remember all the talented and skillful people on your committee?
That's the part I forgot. Should put my glasses on first. We meet every third Thursday of the month at 5:00 PM. We currently now have 10 members, and Rick is our liaison. We appreciate that. You know, residents are welcome.
It's a great cross-section of people.
Everybody works really hard.
I mean, people coming from all different directions, background-wise. I mean, it's a good group. I enjoy it.
Yeah, they all step up to the plate, and they all give 100%, so.
Any questions, thoughts, comments?
Good.
Good.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next up is Planning. Planning Commission Judy Hendrickson.
I'm Judy Hendrickson, Chair of the Planning Commission, and I'm the relative newcomer to this group. Tom Kelso is our Vice Chair this year, Ed Renfield, Rick Colallo is our liaison, and George Lowenstein, and we have a new appointee, Mr. Harvey.
Man who just left the podium, Ed. He can switch notes at the end of it, too.
Who missed our January meeting because you were somewhere else, but we're welcome, we're very happy to have you. So we need some new blood. Judith Stern-Goldstein is our Planning Consultant Engineer. Stephanie Mason, Township Manager, is at every one of our meetings. And Cynthia Delgado is our Recording Secretary. We meet the third Monday of every month at 7:00 PM, although, the fourth Monday, sorry, although it's been kind of all over lately because of the calendar. You know, this time of year's been a little funny with holidays and things like that. But we are an advisory board, and we continue to support an ongoing and new projects and work closely with the community and other boards and commissions, as well as the Bucks County Planning Commission Plan. We're encouraging more efficient energy use, denser development linked to better open spaces, and good circulation through the community with continued expansion of our bike and hike network. We have met with a representative from this. New projects this past year have been Delaware Valley College, their proposed track expansion and lighting of the football field. We recommended approval on that. There's been some time restrictions, along with a final land development plan for the Life Sciences Building there. We've reviewed and recommended the approval of preliminary minor subdivision plans for two new houses proposed by Hallmark Building Group at 98 Shady Retreat Road. This is a minor subdivision that will divide one lot into two single-family homes. We have been reviewing the Gozberger Track, which you saw a little bit earlier, across the street from the Y, and in the beginnings of seeing what they're doing in their sketch plans, and hopefully that will come back, and we'll be talking to them further on that. We've had a lot of discussions regarding the Pebble Ridge, Woodbridge Sewer Planning Modules, and we've been coordinating with that sort of thing to see how that fits well into the township's comprehensive plan, and it was submitted to the Department of Environmental Protection, so that's in the process, or from what I understand, has review. We have a very lively and well-attended group. It's not so much public participation. We're still trying to get more people out for that. There have not been, in the last couple of years, it's been pretty light as far as the number of projects that come in. So we have been trying to reevaluate some of our ongoing work during that time and develop, let's see, navigate the planning approval process as well as design improvements that may be able to make our whole process a little more attractive to people and a little more familiar. So one of the things that we are trying to do is, in our free time, we're trying to work on reviewing and updating the zoning maps and codes to include the street hierarchy ordinance that was adapted last year, as well as the bike and hike routes and maps, the tree ordinance information. We're also preparing a video presentation for TAB and trying to describe more of what we do as a planning commission. Some upcoming things that are ongoing and upcoming things are the Blueberry Hill Development that is over by the Kohl Shopping Center. That is, they've been into us, to talk to us about the daycare center and the Verizon store that has opened up there. Hopefully, they'll be back for more ongoing discussion. We would like to have some design input on what they're trying to do and try to help them through that process. It's kind of a white elephant property right now, and we're trying to help them through that. The Pavilion at Furlong with the Grasso Group, that's been extended forever, and that, again, is something that we're trying to see if something can actually happen with that property. Penn Color has been in for a sketch plan to rework the subdivision of existing non-conforming parcels. There's a number of variances that are required there, and our aim is just to simplify that property and to come up with something that will avoid some future confusions. The Edison Quarry property is something that's starting, we're starting to make some inroads in discussing with them what potential could be there and what they might be up against as far as variances and other things that they might need to do if they want to do anything with that property as far as expansion, but we would like to see something happen. So we're trying to invite people in to see if we can get these things to move forward a little faster, if possible, or spur things on. So that's about it. Does anybody have any questions? And hopefully, we'll be able to clarify this with our presentation.
And hopefully, everybody will come to me. If you want to know what's happening in the township building-wise, you've got to go to some of these meetings. You'll, you know, as you're driving down the road and say, "What's going up over there? And what's happening over there?" If you're the Planning Commission, you know how many doorknobs are in there and how they're coming in and out. It's really exciting to be ahead of things. So put it on your calendar. You might, well, you can look at the agenda, too.
Just a little aside is one of the things that we had come up that had really nothing to do with planning, but it showed up at our meeting, was hot air balloons. And there was a group of residents that was very hot and bothered about hot air balloons and their pads over our township and wanted to have some input about controlling hot air balloon flight and landing locations. It's not our purview. It's part of, they are under the FAA, so there wasn't really much we could do, but we became a community meeting place for the balloon, the local balloon companies and societies that are out there and the residents to air their differences, to find out and educate each other about what the problems were and what the conditions are for ballooning and what it takes and all that. So that was quite lively and kind of interesting, although it wasn't really quite up our alley, but we made the best of it and tried to get the both parties to talk, and they came to an agreement, and I think that that was something that worked out pretty well. So anything goes, almost.
Thanks, Judy. And everybody's coming up here telling you when the meetings are and please come. Well, you're all invited to come to them, too. And trust me, if you go to one of the meetings of another committee, you'll leave there much more knowledgeable, happy, and have a good time in the process. Next is Park and Rec, Kathy Brown.
Can I go here? Is that all right?
Wherever you want to go, Kathy.
I'm Kathy Brown, Vice Chair of the Park and Rec Board. John Bray couldn't be here. I don't have a presentation, short and sweet, right here. We meet the second Tuesday of the month at 5:30. John Bray is the Chair. Our members are Jan Sussinguth, Blythe Kelly, Sue Reichwein, Paul Dibnella, who's new, I haven't met. Sean is our liaison, and we have Emily Rymet, who is our youth member. If you walk through Central Park, you'll see evidence of our long-term goals. We're excited to see the game grove, and I walked through today, and it was really neat to see the snow piled high on the board, on the checkerboards, and obviously, nobody could use it, but the game grove and also the life trail stations. Those are two things that we've had in the plans for a long time. Our board has been behind Kids Castle and the Future Sensory Enrichment Trail. Our plans for the coming year include moving forward with our support for that sensory trail and the construction of the trail, as well as support to secure donors for the pods that will go along once the trail is built. We're supporting the need to replace the showmobile and exploring the needs for a performing art structure. We will assess the needs and plan accordingly, and we will continue our collaboration with Kids Castle Committee as they move forward on their next phase. And one of the things we look forward to doing is a needs assessment in the park system by visiting each of the parks and looking at the good and the bad and what needs to be done to each park, and then come back, you know, make a list there. And something that I didn't realize, and I was a part of the joint plan, and Stephanie, you were a part of that, too, that we did, which I thought was recently, that was truly years ago, and Barbara Lyons is the only one on the board now who has a copy of that comprehensive plan. So our goal was to get each supervisor a copy of that comprehensive plan, as well as a master plan for Central Park. So that's, and I want to dethrone what Sean said as far as Dick John and his crew and the fact that our parks are usable the day after we just got, what, 10 inches of snow?
Certainly sufficient amount, yes.
And the excellent job that they're doing with the parks and maintaining the parks and keeping them usable, rain, sleet, snow, whatever. So that's, did I cover everything?
No, because your agenda has so many things on it. You guys have a full plate, and I know a lot of the other committees do, too, but you guys got a full plate. It's always, always a handful of things that get done right away, and, you know, it's working. You just mentioned a couple of places.
Well, it's short-term, long-term, but we're getting things done, so that's important. Okay. Do I get to do Dog Park, or do I have to sit back down? I'll sit back down. Okay.
No, you can do Dog Park.
I'll take that turn.
All right. Next was DTMA. Dick, Bach couldn't make it. Do you have any comments or anything you want to say, Dick, while you get a minute on the floor?
Sure. Basically, our authority is chaired by various residents of the township. Our Chairman is Ron May. Vice Chair is Ed Hagy. Dick Bach is the Treasurer. Ed Harvey is in the audience, is our Treasurer, and Frank Barusa is still working hard on the authority. He's Assistant Secretary Treasurer. Just a little background information for some of the new folks on the board. The authority was, basically, came about in about 1976 to solve a sewer issue up in the Cross Keys area, and it's kind of strange that 25 years later, they've just resolved a contaminated water issue in the Cross Keys area. And they were able to do that by obtaining several grants funded by approximately $2.6 million in the past few years, which put fresh public water into the Cross Keys area and sealed most of those contaminated wells. So I think that's pretty interesting. It went full cycle in 25 years. And I'm proud to say that I've been associated with the authority and the township since 1988 and have been involved in a lot of the issues the authority takes on, one of which is to continue to provide potable water to the public by constantly upgrading and making changes to the system. You know, as a side benefit, it is also trying to extend water mains throughout the township, which is a challenging issue in itself, but they've been able to install approximately 50 to 60 miles of water main throughout the township area. And they continue to foster a spirit of cooperation between our neighbors by having interconnections to help in times of shortages or just general daily demand. For water being Warrington, New Britain Township, Plumstead Township, Buckingham Township, and of course, Doylestown Borough. And the authority, I just realized, has had an agreement with the Borough for more than 25 years to provide water back and forth between the two municipalities. No questions asked, governmental lines not involved. We just upgraded the agreement with them, and the authority this year is planning to move ahead with restructuring and rebuilding its central booster station, which is the main pumping system providing water to the Doylestown Hospital area. So it continues to do these things to improve its system. It continues to look for new customers. We have approximately 2,500 retail customers today, starting from zero to 2,500 25 years later. We do sell some ware wholesale between the municipalities, and we do pump approximately 900,000 to a million gallons of water a day to provide for public needs. It maintains, as I said, over 50 miles of water main, over fire hydrants, multiple facilities, and it's looking forward to continually trying to improve the system, trying to get water to all areas of the township. I think that would bring us pretty much up to speed, so.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Next is Kids Castle. Presenting is Rachel Ford.
Sorry, just trying to make sure it's really, that's it, right? Projector's not coming alive. They did something in the back. Hey, Ed, the projector's not working. There we go. There we go.
It's pretty good.
That's all right, yeah.
Here comes the dead guy.
That's all right, we can get started. That's all right. So, sorry, I'll have to flip. My name is Rachel Ford, I'm new to the Kids Castle Advisory Board, although I've been with the organization for about a year. I'm the new Chairman as of January and Joe Salvati is our Vice Chair and we also have John Beederman on our committee. We have two available positions for the Board and lots of open space for volunteers in the organization. Our Liaison is Ryan Mannion and we meet the third Thursday of the month at 6:30. So, 2013, our big goal and accomplishment was to save Kids Castle, to really not have to have it closed for forever. We did have to close it for a little bit longer than we would have liked to refurbish, but we're thrilled that the community really came together and we were able to reopen. In 2013, we had a dedicated team of Advisors and many wonderful volunteers that spent countless hours on our mission as well as a number of Township staff that were really immeasurable in their help to our organization. We raised more than $150,000 through donations, fundraising events and very generous in-kind services that enabled the repair and the refurbishment. We have a very successful arts program that refurbished all of the... refurbished many of the pieces that were taken off of the castle and various members of the community, the students in many of the schools as well as a lot of the artists through the community were able to refurbish them to be reinstalled when the castle was finished. We also have a mural arts program underway. We're looking at a spring 2014 completion, possibly May, to get those installed along the outside perimeter of the fence surrounding the castle. We had a successful commemorative brick program called Save Kids Castle Brick by Brick. It's an ongoing program and it will be going for many years in the future. It enables community members or anyone really to memorialize their gift with a personalized engraved brick that would be installed at the castle. And the first of those should be going in sometime this year as well. 2013, we also had many, many castle events. It started with Santa visiting the castle, we had an Earth Day celebration, I'm sure many of you attended. We had a fantastically attended egg hunt that the kids absolutely loved. It was a little crazy, but the kids loved it and that's what it was for. We hosted the castle closing party where we wrapped the castle all up and closed it for the season, or for the summer to do the refurbishing. The Community Castle Party with Touch a Truck was a really fun event, really well-attended and was a nice fundraiser for the organization as well. And the, very well-attended casino night as well and I know many of you were there for a really, really fun evening and again, a great fundraiser for us, so, and that took a ton of people, a lot of hours and everyone really pulled through on that for a great night. And then the Crown Jewel, the grand reopening ribbon-cutting party and ceremony that the attendance was amazing. The community really came out, the kids were so excited and we were thrilled to see the number of people that were able to come out for that. It really showed what we were doing meant something to the community, so it was wonderful. We've had a ton of support from the schools and other local children organizations. They've held private events and donated funds. The different schools have held events like the Dance-a-thon, Play for Kids Castle, things like that, that they then will send us some money. In fact, Doyle Elementary is the school that donated $5,000 and really put us over the edge for the $150,000 mark that enabled us to open the castle. So, the schools have been a huge part of this. In addition to the children, really the young people volunteering, high school students were remarkable in their baking skills for many of our events. They would, we would put out a sign-up genius and within 20 minutes, it was full for all of the kids that wanted to bake items for our bake sale tables and they would come out and help with the, help with the events, help with the outreach tables, things like that. And then also with a lot of the paintings, cleaning the castle, cleaning sanding, things like that, cleaning up. The young people in the community are really, really supportive. And actually, one of the highlights here, we have a video and I'm not sure how many of you have seen it. If I can't get this to work, we'll move on. So, hopefully this works relatively quickly. And this is a video that was put together by two young people in the community, Carter and Eli Moore. Maybe it'll do it? Okay.
Hi, this is Carter Moore and Eli Moore reporting for Doylestown TV. In the coming months, we'll be working together to do some special reporting for Doylestown TV. Our first story is about something at Doylestown that is very special to both of us. Kids Castle at Central Park. Kids Castle was built 17 years ago by a group of volunteers in our community who thought our area needed a place where kids could play, get exercise and use their imaginations. Volunteers raised money, designed and built the eight-story wooden Kids Castle structure. The design was inspired by Henry Mercer's Front Hill Castle in Doylestown and was based on input from the area's schoolchildren. Kids from all around our area enjoyed Kids Castle for many years, but about a year ago, it became clear that Kids Castle needed help. Many repairs were needed and without these repairs, the castle would have to be taken down. Last spring, the castle closed and its future was uncertain. Volunteers from the community stepped in and helped save Kids Castle. They raised money and volunteered their time to help repair Kids Castle. Volunteers washed and stained the castle, restored artwork, repaired broken items and installed many new fun features. Thanks to the hard work of so many people in our community, Kids Castle is now open again. Let's check it out! The new and improved Kids Castle has been cleaned and stained. It has new roofing, decks, entrances, flooring and artwork. Two new, large racing twisty slides have been installed. The grounds all around Kids Castle have been fixed up too. This new specially engineered wood fiber was added to make the grounds as safe as possible. Let's go inside! There are many fun ways to enter the castle. Climb the rock wall, climb the steps or hop across the bridge. There are safe, new cargo nets throughout the castle and lots of fun places to hide, like before. While climbing the eight different levels of the castle, kids can enjoy great views to the area surrounding Central Park and then compete for the fastest escape down the twisty slides. Oh yeah, that's awesome! While exploring the castle, kids can use their imaginations to escape fire-breathing dragons or become part of the castle's royal family. They can run through one passageway and then escape down the fireman's pole. There's just so much to see, do and explore at Kids Castle that kids never yet board there and they always have a lot of fun. If you haven't checked out the newly restored Kids Castle, head over to Central Park to check it out soon. One more thing, the Friends of Kids Castle have plans to install more playground equipment for younger kids as well as handicap accessible pieces, so the playground will be as inclusive as possible. To learn more, please visit the website, www/savekidscastle.org. Okay now, enough talk, let's go play! This has been Carter Moore and Eli Moore, reporting for Doylestown TV.
I didn't know it's the best video on our government access channel.
It's on there, you can watch it.
Is it on there? I didn't notice it on there, but I was at Kids Castle.
So, we had to play that for you because it's, I mean, I can tell you what all we did and what all Dick John and the team did down there, but really, the kids are the ones that say it best and the smiles are wonderful. So, yes, 2013 was a great success and as the boys said, we do have plans for Phase Two. Our goal is to make play at Kids Castle accessible to kids of all ages and abilities, so everyone can play together. It's a tall order, but we're here to make it happen. We've got some preliminary plans. This first was what we're terming a Kingdom here on the right side of the slide is actually coming off of Kids Castle where the new rock wall and the fireman's pole that you saw on the video are. So, Kingdom One already has a few pieces installed in it. In addition, there's a small taut area, a taut climber that's kind of on the top of that Kingdom One and some taut swings, kind of out towards the right. And the big piece there is what's pictured here, it's a pirate ship. And we actually just received commitment today from a donor that is donating that pirate ship to be installed in Kingdom One. So, we've got a great jump start. We've got this pirate ship that we've now got commitment from a donor that's wonderfully generous. We also had a very gracious donation of $10,000 from Doylestown Hospital. In addition, we've had some just regular general donations coming in since the end of Phase One and currently, we stand at almost $20,000 for Phase Two and that's not including the pirate ship donation. So, really Phase Two is underway, it's got a great jump start, it's going to be a really big undertaking. Really, the next thing that we need to do, Phase Two is a whole new project. Phase One was about the castle. There was a lot of historical people that were involved with the castle in the first build and at the 10-year anniversary. It's a different kind of beast now, it's new installations, it's thinking of inclusivity, it's thinking in playground terms rather than in castle terms. So, we, our big next step is really to build a new volunteer base for Phase Two and to structure the organization to make this happen. We need to define the scope and plan what we're going to do for Phase Two. We need to finalize the plans for the playground. We've met with the playground company and we've got some proposals, but there's nothing set in stone. And then the big one is fundraising. Our group really has to get some good volunteers in to help us raise the funds that we need to put this playground in place and really make the dream come true to finish the remainder of the playground. We're asking for volunteers. We have Board positions, we have lots and lots of committee positions open and anyone that's interested in the community is welcome to join us, we would love to have you. Our website's here and our email is here and we're always able to be contacted. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question that you are...
Sure.
What is that? Is that just at the castle or is that through the community?
So, currently, it will be just at the castle. It's a program that was put in place to either get donations or to compensate for in-kind services. So, different companies, based on different donation levels or in-kind service donation amount levels, were given different sized murals that are being custom-made by artists through the community in conjunction with that business or that person representing. It's not going to be like a billboard or like a sign, it's more a mural representing a concept about the company.
Rachel?
Sure.
I have one question for you. You had mentioned Phase One was obviously focused on the castle and I think if I heard you right, Phase Two is more expanding the other grounds around Kids Castle?
Correct.
So, what's your, what is this committee's coordination with the Park and Rec if they're looking at other activities within Central Park as well?
Right, so I should clarify and it's a point that we've had a lot of, we often get caught up on. We're talking around the actual physical castle, but inside that fence.
Okay. That's your scope?
That's our scope, yes. So, as far as I know, Parks and Rec is outside it up, but absolutely will be, you know, working with them. Yeah, we're looking to put more equipment inside the castle, new swings, new climbing equipment, new accessible equipment. The exact pieces are not known yet, the, kind of the concepts are there. So, we're looking for our volunteers and our team to really put that vision in an exact plan and then be able to fundraise to that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
I was there on Sunday and that rock climbing wall is not as easy as you portray it to be. And if you want to go to a committee that's, I would describe...
Aged out?
What's that?
No, never!
Five to 12. But my only other, if you want to, my best description of the committee would be high energy. So, if you want to go, if it's a boring night and you want to have a high-energy evening, please come to the Kids Castle meeting, you will be energized.
Absolutely. We would not, never let you down on that one.
Thanks Rachel.
Thanks.
Next up is Environmental Advisory Council and the Chair is Ray Hendrick.
Everyone in this room, I'm sure, can remember when you were in grade school and the highlight of the day was show and tell. Well, this is going to be a little show and tell. I'm Ray Hendrick, I'm Chairman of the EAC Committee and on our Board...
Ray, microphone.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Ray Hendrick, Chairman of the EAC Committee. We meet on the third Tuesday of every month and in addition to myself, Bill Lloyd, Shawn Sabowski, Janine Mitchell, Don Richardson, our Liaison is our new Ken Snyder Supervisor, which I'm glad to have. We've had Rick and Shawn both cooperating over the years and always welcome to our committee at any time. Briefly, what I'd like to discuss, we have, I think, two different goals, it seems like. The paperwork committee that we do inside of our meetings and the field work when we're out in the park and along the open space areas. Now, this year, we were instrumental in reviewing several development plans, Blueberry Hill Site, the Old Dublin Pike and the Hallmark Homes Group. We had a very successful EAC Summit meeting with almost all of the Townships in Bucks and many in Montgomery County came to the EAC Summit, which we hosted here at the Township in cooperation with Doylestown Borough. And we had many, many responses of people who were very happy with the cooperation the Township gave and the issues that we addressed at the... at the EAC Summit. We have had, in conjunction with Park and Rec, we've had several programs throughout the year, our Bird Walks, our Introduction of Trees and Shrubs, the summer concerts, where we have a table at the dance and music facilities, and a great deal of turnout and response to those programs. We have worked to identify, in the parks, the sensitive areas for birds and plants, and I would like to just show you what a sample, these are the signs that we're going to be installing here in the township, and... I'm going to pass this around, just to take a look at it. Do you want to run, or do I have to run? The areas are going to be posted to try to establish a breeding population of these specific endangered birds. Our bluebird nest box plan on the Parkway and throughout the township, we have 42 boxes up now, which we've built and maintained, and we've had almost, well, there's several different species of cavity nesting birds using them. We have a leaf and yard waste drop-off program, which is held on the third Saturday from March to December, very successful. We've also, after four years, finally submitted to the supervisors the proposal for the single hauler trash collection program. It's over, I know, you've taken action on it, I'm glad that's not on our agenda anymore. And the membership in the Audubon Bird Town, Doylestown Township is an active participant in Doylestown, the county and state program to establish Doylestown Township as a bird town area. We have also worked on the demonstration garden, which we are going to have a startup in March. We're going to create a native plant, wild trees, shrubs, and wildflowers in Central Park. So, we're very active, involved in a lot of different issues. None of it, none of it could be done without the cooperation of Stephanie, Sandra, Butch, all of the maintenance people, Dick, I mean, without it, we can't do a thing. And your cooperation have always, whenever I've come before this board, and I appreciate very much your cooperation, look forward to doing a lot more for 2014. Any question? Anything at all? I know it's late, I apologize.
What's the box in front of you?
This is the bluebird box. We have 42 of these up, and they've been very successful. We've had 52 bluebirds fledged from these boxes this year in the park system. 14 of them on the Parkway. I hope when you're out on the hiking bike, you can see them from the, many people have asked about them. They're not as much as wood as went into the Kids Castle, but we built them, and we're going to build up more as the trail, which I understand is going to be from Central Park going to behind the White Eagle, and connect to the trail over on Lower State Road. So, we've got elves in the forest busily constructing these boxes, and we'll get them up. But it's fun, and I enjoy it, and I appreciate your confidence in us to do it. It's a labor of love.
It's obviously a labor of love, because your passion comes through, and just so you know, your efforts on Old Dublin Pike, finding the bats in the barn, they've agreed, the developer agreed last week to put up two bat boxes.
I did not, I did not know that, but I felt as a clandestine warrior, I crawled through the barn, because someone had said to me in one of the meetings that they were going to have, they thought there were barn owls in there, and I said, "Oh, my God, I'd like to see it." But in crawling through the open spaces and areas around the barn, I found the bat droppings, and the bats are there, and they've had successfully, or they've agreed to do it. Excellent, thank you, thank you so much, I didn't know that.
Yep.
Thanks.
So, good job.
And I'm going to miss that lady right there. Big talk, yeah, big talk. Thank you very much.
And back by popular demand is Kathy Brown, our Dog Park Advisory Committee Chair.
Okay, Kathy Brown, Chair of the Dog Park Advisory Committee. Our members are Caitlin Cousin, Alyssa Russell, Ada Popek, Deb McComas. Members at large are Helen Newman, Scott Tilden, and David Hanson. And the unique thing, well, I don't know if it's unique, but the Dog Park was a combined effort of the Borough and the Township, so the advisory board is a combined effort of the Borough and the Township, so we have members from both. We meet the fourth, I mean, we meet the first Monday of the month at 6 o'clock, so our first meeting was a year ago today. Just FYI. So, let's see. The role of our board members is to educate the public, support the Dog Park and its members, and its continued safe operation, and encourage communication with all involved in the Dog Park. Now, one of the things with the Dog Park was that the Friends of the Doylestown Dog Park raised the funds for the Dog Park, and now it's part of the park system, so it's important for the advisory committee and the Friends of the Doylestown Dog Park to still work together, which we do. We have not set our goals for this year, because we meet as needed, and I'm happy to say that in the safe operation part of what we discuss is dog incidents, and things that happened at the Dog Park, and we have not had any incidents recently, which is a good thing. When we first started, we had a few, but of course, when you think of kids playing on a playground, all kids don't always get along, so when dogs are playing out on their playground, they don't always get along. I have to commend our orientation program, because the orientation program, every member must attend orientation, and I strongly believe that the success of the Dog Park is due to that orientation. It works, it's working. I can say we have around 500 dogs registered. That doesn't mean that they're 500 households, because there are households that have two or three dogs per household, but that's a good number, and to have very few incidents is a very positive thing. Let's see, we encourage all interested people to check the Township Park and Rec website to review the orientation program, and the Dog Park membership application, and to visit the Dog Park website and Dog Park Facebook page as well. I think that's it. I am happy with the way things are going, I anticipate that they will continue moving as they are. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question for you. Of the 500 dogs that are, they can go there, during the year peak weeks, how many, no, but I don't know if it's, is it 100 a day? I mean, what do you, what is...
Ken, it all depends. We have the yappy hour, which we have probably, at one point, there could be 20 small dogs in the small dog area, they come between 3:30 and 5 o'clock, almost every day. The large dog park area probably could max out at 20, but also, it's people regulated, and if it's too crowded, people come back later, so...
Well, that's, I was going to be my next question.
Yeah.
If you have 500, what can you go to? Because you're right, there has to be a...
It's unlimited, because the owners, if it's too crowded, they'll even come back. We've never had a time where there have been too many dogs at the Dog Park.
So, that's, it's a owner decision?
Owner decision.
It says, "It's too crowded, I'm not staying."
Yes, and part of that, again, I go back to the orientation, in that we explain, you know, the good of a Dog Park, and how it operates, and the responsibilities, and the owners are responsible owners on, you know, biggest part.
But the Dog Park's also been, as park hours are, from basically sunup to sunset, so, you know, there's plenty of time throughout a day for a member to take their dog and utilize the Dog Park.
Right, right. And it really is encouraging to see that, you know, we have the golden hour, which is where golden retriever owners get together, and they will meet. You know, so it's becoming, one of the goals was to obviously allow dogs to get exercise, safe exercise, but also to bring people together, and get people outside, and exercising and walking around, so it's working.
Good.
It's working. And the memberships are supporting the maintenance of the park, as far as, I mean, as far as I know, I haven't been told otherwise, and membership is increasing. We still have a good attendance of orientation, and you have to attend orientation before you join the Dog Park.
And your manual that was put together by Karen, his award-winning...
Oh, that's right. And the other thing with that, that manual is not only used by other Dog Parks, but also some dog services are also using the orientation as far as the information that's provided in that, for their workers to learn about dog behavior and things too.
Right.
Yes.
That's great, thanks.
Thanks, Kathy. The final presentation is Dick Patterson, and you've probably heard a couple times tonight in the presentations of Bike and Hike, and Trails, and Bike, and even in the presentation by Bucks County Planning Commission, so Dick is going to tie all of that together for us in one neat package, and tell us what his committee does.
Hi, I'm Dick Patterson, and I'm representing the Bike Hike Committee, and I'm also representing Lynn Goldman, who is our chairman, and Tom Kelso, who is our vice chair, and Stephanie Mason, who keeps us all going. Before I start, I wanted to say two things. One, Mr. Gao was a hiker. Did you know that he was the first Westerner to walk the China's Chinese Wall? And he's more famous in China than he is here? And there was a delegation of Chinese who came here last year to honor him. And if you go to the Doylestown Cemetery, you can see his tuna, and there's Chinese inscriptions there.
Ah, I didn't see that.
So, a hiker, Great Wall of China. And the other thing I wanted to thank Dick, as I was walking, as I was coming in today, we're talking about the highways and roads, the Bike Hike Trails are also cleared, which I think shows the importance of the trail system to Doylestown Township, and the way you support the trail system. So, having said that, the Doylestown Bike Hike Committee was formed 24 years ago, and it was formed by a group of people headed by Lynn Goldman, who were very concerned about the bypass, and how the bypass had sort of cut off the Borough from the Township. And so, they got together, and they started thinking about how we can connect it, and they thought the best way to connect it would be through trails, that kids could walk, kids could ride to school, adults could walk, they could ride their bikes, and that was the genesis of the Bike Hike Committee. Let's see if I can go to the next one here. Nope. Up?
I'm trying to see one.
Well, that went, oh, okay, gotcha. So, with the Bike Hike Committee, and specifically the staff and the people who are involved with it, have been very successful in receiving grants, which is making for a very exciting time for the Bike Hike Committee, for Doylestown Township, and for the trail system, because this year, we're going to be doing Destination Peace Valley, where we got a grant for $200,000. That is the trail that will go from Iron Hill Road through Pine Run Reservoir, and then to Cover Bridge Park, and that's a joint program by the Township and by New Britton. That's New Britton Township, right? Oh, it's New Britton Borough, okay, excuse me. So, that's pretty exciting stuff. Construction is going to start in the fall, or in the summer, actually, and it should be finished this year. So, there are existing trails that lead up to that Iron Hill connection with Pine Run Reservoir. It comes out at Cover Bridge Park, and then it'll go on to the road, the trail that Doylestown Township has now, that goes up Keely Road, up to Peace Valley, and then eventually, in the future, there will be a trail that goes across Ferry Road, and then down into Peace Valley, hence the name Destination Peace Valley. Another bit of construction that's going to begin this year is the Neshamity Greenway Phase One, and we heard a lot of talk about the Neshamity Greenway so far this year. We've gotten a $130,000 grant, and this is the trail that will go from where the Neshamity, well, I guess where the Parkway goes over the Neshamity, and it'll go from there up to Upper State Road. And that will be through forest, really forest land owned by Delval College, that they've let us go through there. And that's going to be a really exciting, exciting trail, very beautiful. You can almost sort of work your way through there, you can be like Ray Hendrick and crawl your way through there, and people won't know you're there. And then, ultimately, when you come out of that onto Upper State Road, there will be something called Neshamity Greenway Phase Three, and that is an award that Chaffant got, but it was the proposal and the grant was written by Doylestown Township, New Britton Borough, Chaffant Borough, and each one of the four municipalities are matching the $188,000 grant that we got from DVRPC, so the total cost of that is going to be $240,000. So, we're really excited about that one. That one is just really in the planning stage now. So, the first two are things that are going to happen in 2014. And finally, we got a grant from PICO, and that grant for $10,000 is going to be used to establish a kiosk that will be right at the intersection of the Parkway and Lower State Road, and that will be the main source of information for the Parkway Trail and other trails in the area. Nope? Okay. Little picture of what the, this is really, I guess, the top right is the Parkway Trail, the top, the lower left is, I believe that's the Neshamity Trail, if I'm not mistaken.
Question's already done.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then, of course, there's the New Britton Train Station, and ultimately, we want to have a trail that gets to the New Britton Train Station, and Judy Henderson is working on that one with the neighbors along, near Beale Park, Beale Cemetery, excuse me. So, in 2014, we're going to be applying for some more grants, and one of them will be this connection that goes from Upper State Road to the New Britton Train Station, and then there will also be a, we're also going to be applying for a grant from PennDOT that will complete the trail down Lower State Road from the YMCA to Wells Road. And we have been, we have been very successful in winning these grants, and there are two reasons that make us successful. One is, they're generally multi-municipalities, so it's not just one municipality, it's three, maybe four, and the state and these other organizations love to see more than one municipality together. And the second reason is success. We have demonstrated success in building trails, and people like to give money to people who are successful. And so, those two reasons are the reasons why we've really been very, very fortunate to win the grants that we've got, when things have been tough economically. And this is a picture that many of you were probably there. The Parkway Trail is now almost a year old, and there was a big party there. And how many people were there, Stephanie? Do you remember?
Oh, there were several thousand, I think.
Several thousand people. It was really, it really was a Parkway, it really was a party. And one of the things that we have found, and the county has found, is that people really do want trails, and there's documented evidence that when you have a trail near your property, your property values are going to go up, which is quite a difference. When this whole thing started, and people said, "I don't want a trail in my backyard." Guess what? Having a trail in your backyard is a good deal. So, there's some other things that we're doing. We have special benches, and they can be made available for donation. We have artwork that are on the, two overpasses on the bypass, in the fall, in the fall... In the fall, we're going to have a bike ride, which is a fundraiser, and will also be an introduction to people to learn all the trails, where all the trails are. So we're hoping to have a ten-mile ride and a thirty-mile ride that will go through all the trails. We'll visit sites that may be of interest to them, such the Dale Val Farmers' Market or Dale Val Market, the lavender farm, maybe Sean can show us around your place? But do that kind of thing, so it should really be funny. We'll be having information kiosks throughout the system, and then there'll be a lot of wayfinding trails. A lot of people don't know where the trails are now. There are maps, but it's hard to find on the maps. So with these white wayfinding signs, we'll be able to direct people. You want to go to the center of Doylestown? You go that way. You want to go to Montgomeryville? You go that way. You want to go to Dale Val College and go to college? You go that way. So that should be good. Here's an example of one of the benches that the Cody family purchased in memory of Corinne Cody, who was one of the original founders, and certainly an inspiration for everybody in the trail system. She was the, she was the teacher, or maybe the principal at the time, no, she was the teacher or principal at the time at Coats. Both, both. And she had her kids baking cookies to get money for the first trail in the system, which was at Coats School. So she, and that's her family alone with Lynn Goldman and some other dignitaries there. So, the last message is, get out and use them. And there we are, some famous people, huh? So, thank you, Stephanie, for putting this little paltry slide together for me. I'd mention all the names of the people on our committee, which I can't, there are too many, and if you come to our meetings on the third Tuesday at eight o'clock in the morning, you will find a very energetic group as well. Rick has been there, Sean is our liaison, Judy-
I just wanted to mention that-
Yes.
It's one of the only committees that's, it's also Doylestown Borough, Chauffant, New Britton Township and Borough, as well as Doylestown, so it's well-recognized for the whole area.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. It started out, it started out as a borough and township, and now it's just expanded to include the ones you just mentioned, and we even see Buckingham every once in a while, too.
You're trying to elbow the way-
Actually, we've had Moreton, too. We've had reps from Moreton come.
And Doylestown Hospital has consistently come, as well as Delaware Valley College.
Right.
Also, Middle Institute High School, Middle Bucks.
Middle Bucks Institute Technology.
They just contacted me, the welders there.
Ah, yes, the welders.
They want to do three more silhouettes-
Oh, great, okay.
...this spring. They're ready to go. They've had the wind locked up, and they have this laser to cover them. So, send you one after that, and they're also on one for Corinne that will, that will go to Coats Elementary. Separate, that the, the Cody's.
It was an exciting time for the trail system.
Big year, yeah.
This is a big year coming up, and it's just going to get bigger and bigger, and-
Dick, you had mentioned that you, twenty-four miles of bike trails, bike and bike trails to Doylestown Township.
Stephanie will probably comment.
So, but then you also mentioned there are going to be three projects that you're extending more.
Right.
The Peace Valley, YMCA to Wells, and then the Neshamity Greenway.
Right.
What will that add to your twenty-four?
Actually, the twenty-four, I don't think Stephanie includes the Parkway either.
No, it does not include the Parkway.
So, it's more than twenty-four when you include the Parkway.
Dick, what do you say, another four?
About six.
Six?
Yeah, about six more. You know, it's not so much the length, it's the connectivity. You know, we've got some trail here, some trail there, and then when we start connecting them, then it really starts making sense.
Right.
And so we're hoping that the thirty-mile bike ride will maybe take thirty miles.
Any questions or comments?
Thanks, Dick, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Everybody, thank you. We appreciate it. It's been a long night, but I think a very fruitful night.
Yeah, a lot of good information.
Excellent. Needing to adjourn?